Good evening, everybody. Start the meeting off with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Heard the motion, all in favor and opposed, to vote. This meeting is being televised live on cable Channel 9 and being taped by PBD Access TV and also being recorded by our City Council Stenographer.
Mr. President, if I may, move to suspension of the rules, move to receive late communication from the mayor, and I think the mayor wants to discuss some appointments, if that's okay.
Heard the motion, all in favor and opposed, to vote. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Council Gould. I'll be very brief. As you know, for us to function properly as city government, we need to have qualified giving people to serve on our boards and commissions. And we have a couple of people today that I wanted to introduce and ask for approval for some key positions on boards that a lot is happening on. First is Mr. Dan Loring, he's a resident of South PBD, he and his family. His resume is in front of you, as you can see, extremely well qualified to assist on the Cable Commission, which we're in dire need of some members on the Cable Commission. In fact, we've run into some quorum issues recently, and I think with Dan's background, his reasonable nature, the fact that he's been a resident of PBD, cares deeply for the city, and is certainly aware of some of the issues that we've been dealing with with Comcast and looking for alternatives, I think Dan would be an excellent addition to become a full member of the Cable Commission. He is here today, and I'd move forward with him for this position.
Heard the motion, all in favor, take a roll call vote. I need a motion from the floor, actually.
Mr. President, motion to receive the application or the recommendation from the mayor, Daniel Loring, for appointment to the Cable Commission for a three-year term starting immediately, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Gould. Heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed, roll call vote.
Councilors Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Sussulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing, one absent.
Great. Dan is here again in the back, thank you, Dan, for your willingness to serve on the board, I appreciate it. Also, I have some appointments for the Historical Commission, some extremely important issues that are coming up here in the Historical Commission, and all of you know how hard they work to preserve and protect our city's history. We have a great deal of history here in the city, and we have an outstanding collection of men and women who work very hard for us to make sure that people know about our history. One of the big projects we have coming up is George PBD Statue, among other things. So, what I'm asking for today is to move to full voting members, Mr. David Cronin and Vincent Rupony, they've served the last few years as alternate members. Recently, retiring from the board was Mary Leary and Judy Otto. So, David Cronin and Vincent Rupony, who served as alternate members for the last couple of years, would move up to full-time voting members. And also, very happy to submit for your approval, alternate member, who many of you know, Debbie Eskenazi, her and her husband Saul are here. Debbie's been involved in just so many different ways for decades here in the city, a true PBD lady. Been involved most recently in the PBD Garden Club, which has been a great asset to us, helping us on a number of projects, the Police and Fire Memorial, a great deal of work we did over at the South PBD Library, and also, she is one of the lead volunteers at the Haven from Hunger. You drive down there anytime, and odds are you're gonna see Debbie working for us. So, wanted to bring forth her name for appointment to the Historical Commission as an alternate member. She is here as well, and I think she'll be a great fit to continue the important work that the Historical Commission is doing.
Motion, please.
Mr. President, following the recommendation of the mayor, approval of David J. Cronin to the Historical Commission, three-year term, Mr. Vincent Rupony, Historical Commission, three-year term, and welcome Debbie Eskenazi to the Historical Commission for a one-year term. So moved.
Heard the motion, all in favor and opposed, to vote, roll call vote.
Councilors Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Sussulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing, one absent.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, item four, a hearings zoning ordinance amendment. The City Clerk will read the proposed zoning ordinance amendment.
Notice as hereby given that the City Council of the City PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, November 16, 2017, at 7:30 PM. In the Franklin Wiggan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 5 of the Massachusetts General Laws, to consider amending the zoning ordinance of the City PBD as follows. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City PBD as follows. Section 1, that the zoning ordinance of the City PBD entitled City PBD Zoning Ordinance adopted April 28, 2011, and amended through July 18, 2017, is hereby further amended as follows. By repealing Section 6 dot 14 entitled Temporary Moratorium on the Sale and Distribution of Recreational Marijuana, and adding a new section 6 dot 14 as follows. 6 dot 14 marijuana establishments forbidden. The operation of any marijuana establishment as defined in General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1, including without limitation, a marijuana cultivator, marijuana testing facility, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business, is prohibited in all zoning districts of the city. This prohibition shall not apply to the sale, distribution, or cultivation of marijuana for medical purposes licensed under Chapter 369 of the Acts 2012. Section 2, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law PBD City Council Councillor Joel D. Sasla, City Council President.
Thank you, and this is a public hearing. At this time, I'd like to ask anybody who'd like to speak in favor of the proposed zoning ordinance, to come to the microphones, take your name and address for the record. Speaking in favor of it?
I will try to be brief, but this is a topic certainly I could talk at length on, and all of you have heard me speak about this. This is a topic that we've been discussing and working on now for a number of months, even years. And this is something that I strongly believe in, something I believe is important for the city and for our future, and I don't want to overemphasize the word "important," but I do think this vote is an important vote, as to the direction of what type of city we want to be and where we want to move forward to. Now, again, recreational marijuana is different than medicinal marijuana. I do think medicinal marijuana serves a purpose for treatment for those that need it. That's handled through working with the doctor, getting a license and a card from the state, and going in and purchasing that medicinal marijuana for your medical needs. To me, that's important, and we're gonna be having a medical facility, I think, in the near future here in the city of PBD. But to me, recreational is different. Recreational marijuana is a decision we have to make as a community, again, as to what type of community we want to be. I think the city has spoken in our earlier, the election of 2016, November of 2016, we as a city voted against marijuana, and at the time, it was for medicinal and for recreational marijuana. And that was approximately 55 to 45 percent vote here in the city of PBD. Mike Smazinski is here, their city attorney, can certainly speak to some of the legal issues that we've discussed over the years, but I'm certainly looking to move forward with a vote today. Again, it comes down to what type of city do we want to be? Do you want to have a city where you can just walk in off the street to a convenience store of some sort and purchase marijuana? I think it creates a number of legal issues, and makes public safety issues, puts concerns on, or difficulties for police to make decisions. Certainly, our youth have to be protected. We've invested a lot of money in our student-based health center at the high school, and also Healthy PBD Collaborative, and I think we'd be sending the wrong message to our youth, allowing recreational marijuana here in our city. I also think, and I'm hopeful of a vote tonight, because I do think it gives us, puts us in a position when we're negotiating with whoever the medicinal marijuana provider here is in the city. And I do want to say, I know it was a lengthy meeting the other day, and I thought it was an excellent meeting, the questions that all of you asked were terrific, and I do think that the right votes were made, and I would've made those same votes that all of you did. But again, in terms of recreational marijuana, I think it's a mistake for our community. I think our community has spoken on this topic strongly, and I think this is the correct path for us to take. Again, I think it's important for us to make a decision tonight, because it gives us, further backs our position when we're gonna be negotiating with the medicinal marijuana provider, not to have recreational as part of it. That would have to be something that would be negotiated as part of a host fee agreement, but with this vote today, this would allow us to move forward and take the stand and take the position I think is appropriate for our city and is the desire of our city. I can certainly speak in more detail, but this is an issue that I strongly believe is the right decision for the city of PBD, and I ask you today to vote to not allow recreational marijuana to be sold in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion to receive item 8A.
So moved.
Motion, all in favor and opposed, to vote. Anybody else like to speak in favor of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment? Anybody else like to speak in favor? Anybody like to speak in opposition to the proposed zoning amendment? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Mike Crawford. I'm 148 Lafayette Street in Marblehead. I'm a Marblehead resident. The reason I'm here today, definitely was a proponent of recreation and medical. As a medical patient, I would love to see recreational. I think it helps a lot of patients that don't want to be on the list, but that's not even why, I'm not here to argue about recreational versus medical or any of that stuff, because it was already decided. I understand the vote was against recreational and PBD, but recreational passed and won. This ban today will not change the vote that happened statewide. We're still gonna have recreational marijuana legalization in PBD. This is basically, what I want to talk about is what Mayor Walsh is talking about in Boston. He was my, like, Mayor Walsh was one of the biggest opponents to legalization. He's not talking about a ban. I think if you want a ban, you should definitely have a revote, you should have the citizens of PBD decide that, because it's not about legalization anymore, it's about tax money. This is gonna get, recreational's gonna happen in Salem, recreational's gonna happen in Marblehead, recreational's gonna happen in Amesbury. There are communities that are gonna be selling this recreational, so what does PBD lose out of this? Millions of dollars. We're talking about millions of dollars, we're talking about a 3 percent sales tax that you can add on, the city of PBD. I suggest that should be the debate today, or, you know, for your next city council, or just hearing from people, what should be the tax rate locally? Should it be 0, 1 percent, 2 percent, 3 percent? Because you can add a 3 percent tax and make millions of dollars for the citizens, for the schools, for the DPW, for all the things that you need money for right now. You also can add a 3 percent for the first five years, you can also add another 3 percent host agreement. So you're talking about millions and millions of dollars that PBD is not gonna get if you pass this ban tonight. And some of the opponents will say, "Well, we just need to slow down and wait, see how it works out." Well, that's not how this industry works. You know, I've been covering this for like 15 years, proponent, interviewed hundreds of stakeholders, elected officials, and the industry, they want to see communities that are on board, because they're investing millions of dollars. And if you miss this now, it's gonna be real hard to get in later. Salem's gonna have the head start, they're going forward with it, they're gonna get millions of dollars out of this. So, that's really what I want to discuss, is the amount of money that Veterans Memorial High School isn't gonna get, that the kids of PBD aren't gonna get. But, you know, all the problems that we're talking about, I think they're minimal, but they're still gonna be here without the extra money that you could be getting from this. And the first five years, you get that extra 3 percent if you say yes. So, the time is now, the sooner you act, if you get ahead of it, like Amesbury has. And in Amesbury, they passed, it did win on the ballot, but it went bigger the second time. The second time, they put it with less, you know, with less voters. The reason it won bigger second time, I think, is because people realize this is about jobs, this is about tax money, this is about doing the right thing for your schools and your community, because they found out that Salisbury was going forward, Salisbury's gonna get that money. So Amesbury, the vote was even bigger the second time, and I think that you'll see that if you put it to a vote in PBD, that the vote will be closer, and I think that the side I'm on will win the vote if you put it before the voters again, because they're gonna realize this is about jobs, this is about tax money, this is about the high school, the middle school students, if you're interested in prevention, a lot of prevention money there. There's a lot of money, you know, if you're interested in stopping the opiate epidemic, a lot of money there. So, that's why I urge you strongly to vote no on the ban, and if you do want to ban it, put it before the voters at PBD. Thank you very much.
Anybody else who'd like to speak in opposition to the amendment? Opposition?
My name is Scott Winters. I am from Amesbury, Massachusetts. I am vice chair of the Recreational Marijuana Committee for the city of Amesbury, Massachusetts, appointed by the mayor. The mayor of Amesbury appointed a pretty well-balanced eight-member committee six months ago, and we've been discussing the topic with KP Law, with members of our law enforcement, sit on our committee, members of the clergy, downtown business association, addiction specialist, a member of NOAA, and a male nurse. We've had some great conversations in the last six months, and we've been very transparent about those conversations with the community. We are a smaller community, we voted in favor of Prop 4 by 58 percent. 90 percent of Amesbury voters showed up last year, 85 percent of those voted on Prop 4, and 58.5 percent of those voted in favor. We put a ballot question on again, and we, the no to the ban folks won it at a ratio of two to one, which is more than what voted last time around. So people have had chains of hearts, and my point here is only, form a committee, take the temperature of the entire community, talk to everybody that you can prior to banning this outright. It'll take decades to get this back on the ballot if your citizens decide to change this. And like Mike said, they're gonna miss out on a lot of revenue. But, again, it's really about the conversation. It's really about talking with your community. If Amesbury wouldn't have wanted this, we wouldn't do it. If we were a community that was not in favor of this, we wouldn't have done it, and it's that simple. I say form a committee, just, that's all we discuss. We don't talk about school boards, we don't talk about anything else. We just talk about the topics of adult-use cannabis within our city. We're also fortunate to have one of the state's first grow facilities for the medicinal side of things. ATG, Alternative Therapies Group, has been in our city for four years, propositioning the city a year prior to that, so we know that those guys really well, and we've had a wonderful relationship, working relationship with them for, what, five years now? Four actual working relationship years. They pay decent taxes, they give money to charities, they are non, they're not a burden to their neighbors, to our local law enforcement, to the mayor's office or city council. Again, my only point here, really, and I'll finish with this, is just form a committee, talk about it, be transparent about it, make sure the community's engaged fully with this, and then go back to ballot and see what the community says. It was 48 percent that voted in favor of Prop 4 in PBD last year, that's a substantial number of people, and I think they have a right to, you know, at least voice their opinions, and you might actually have some more folks that have changed over, you know, in the last year. So that's it, thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak against the proposed ordinance? Anyone like to speak against it?
Permission to pass out?
Motion received, handout.
Thank you. My name is Jim Borghozani. I am the Director of Communications for Question 4, the campaign to regulate marijuana-like alcohol. And I'm here to ask you to consider a few things before you vote. Look at the handout that I just gave you. I just want to go over quickly what's in the law and the control that you have. The law allows adults to possess a limited amount of cannabis. This is not unrestrained legalization. The, creates a Cannabis Control Commission that will oversee the entire industry and make regulations, they're working on that right now. Requires testing of all cannabis, which, you know, consumers need, and we're finding that in other states, it's a much better system now, safe cannabis is being sold. It gives cities and towns, it gives you the ability to limit the number of marijuana facilities in your town. It gives you the ability to put a 6 percent tax, 3 percent local option tax, 3 percent host agreement tax, that can be renegotiated every five years. The public use is prohibited, there's no public consumption. Driving under the influence of marijuana is still illegal. And recreational applications will begin in April, and sales anticipated to begin in the summertime. I don't expect many things to open until September, frankly. The other thing I want to talk about, the second slide, is the power that you have as the city council. You have this power. You can determine the location of these facilities, you can determine the operating hours, and you can determine the manner of operations, you can determine signage, there's no window displays, you can't walk by a marijuana facility and see any product that's not allowed by the law. No convenience stores will be selling cannabis, they will be standalone stores only, just like in every other state. You can negotiate, again, the host agreement, you'll negotiate every five years, that's up to 3 percent, and you can put into place a 3 percent tax that you get forever. And of course, it restricts sales to people 21 and over. It's important to note that for public safety, if you take a vote to ban recreational facilities tonight, you're not banning marijuana from PBD. All you're doing is making sure that criminals control marijuana commerce in PBD. The whole idea of legalization is to take commerce away from criminals and put it into the hands of legitimate businesses that check IDs, that pay taxes, that are regulated. Again, you're not doing anything. Prohibition has never kept marijuana out of any Massachusetts community. It's in my community, it's in PBD. Again, all you will do is put it in the hands of people who pay taxes, check IDs, and sell tested product. The revenue, I want to go over the revenue a little bit, it was mentioned earlier. I provided two models that can give an idea of what the revenue will look like. One is the existing sales in Massachusetts at cannabis, medical cannabis facilities. The other one is looking at Colorado sales and trying to adjust those to anticipated Massachusetts sales. Today, the average sales of a medical marijuana facility is $7 million a year. That's based on about 42,000 medical card holders, so we're talking a small, limited consumer base, $7 million a year. At that tax rate, at 6 percent, which is what a town can charge, that would mean $420,000 in new taxes for PBD, or for any town. The other model is the Colorado model. If you look at Colorado, the anticipated sales in Color, and by the way, Colorado was the first state to legalize, so you know, and there, you know, quite a few stores have opened. They're anticipating sales of $1.6 billion in 2017, that's the projected sales for adult-use marijuana, that does not include medical marijuana, $1.6 billion. If you look at their population, which is 5.5 million, a little less than Massachusetts, that comes down to a total of $192, a little more than $192 per capita. That doesn't mean that every man, woman, and child in Colorado uses cannabis or buys it, but the people that do buy it, buy quite a bit of it. So the per capita sales, which is the best way to project this, is $192, a little more. If you look at that transposed onto Massachusetts, and if you look at the population base that PBD might draw from, and you use that per capita figure, you have sales of $17.2 million, that's sales. If you look at the tax rate on that, if you go your full 6 percent, that would be a little over a million dollars annually in sales, in new tax revenue. So again, I think that's one thing to consider, you have several options. You can, as a city council, you can limit, right now, the number of marijuana facilities in PBD to, I think, four. I called the mayor's office today, and they told me there's 11 retail package stores and 11 malt and beer stores in PBD. So 20 percent of that is four stores. You could limit it right now to four stores. You could go less than that, because you have that power as a city council, that's up to you. But I would ask you to consider these things when you make this decision. Maybe a good idea is to send it back to committee for further study, or form a new committee for further study, rather than taking a decision tonight. One thing to think of also, there is legislation that's gonna be filed that will prohibit any town that bans cannabis from receiving any of the state income, state revenue, that's gonna be coming from the statewide sale of cannabis. I don't know if it'll pass, but it's possible, but that is something that's being, that is gonna be filed, so that's just one thing to consider also. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Just give your address for the record, for the stenographer. Your address for the record, address?
Duxbury, Massachusetts.
Anybody else who'd like to speak in opposition to the proposed amendment?
My name is Brian Ritchie, I'm a resident 101 Sycamore Street in Belmont, Massachusetts, and I'm just here to say that I heard the opposition mention that this was a public safety issue, and I've also heard arguments about the revenue. Well, I'm not really, you know, we all know that the- time to really lay out a lot of these rules. I'm sorry to put you in this situation, Representative Walsh, but, you know, hopefully you'll—I can only do it twice. Hopefully, you'll have more information. I do lean in the direction the mayor wants to go. I just—I feel as though there's a lot of information out there that we don't know. We already have a moratorium till December 31, 2018. We have 13 months to look at this and get all the information. We have the opportunity to look at towns like Amesbury and these other towns that were mentioned and see what happens there. And I don't feel comfortable supporting this zoning ordinance tonight. I would like to see it go back to committee or go to committee, maybe Legal Affairs, so that we can look at this further and get all the information before we make a vote on it. A year ago, we were against recreational—excuse me—medicinal. We changed that, and now we have it. We got more information. I'd like to just wait and sit back and see where that goes. Thank you.
Councilor Gouvel.
Hi. I appreciate my fellow councilors' thoughts on this, but to be honest with you, with all due respect to the people who came up and spoke, you know, the silence is deafening on the opposition from PBD residents. I heard from somebody from Amesbury, Marblehead, Duxbury. Where are the PBD residents who are opposed to us rejecting this? They're not here. The election that this took place in—the 48 percent that they indicated—the 52 percent said no. And it was one of the highest turnout elections we've had in years in the city. One of the highest. It was during a peak time, and we didn't hear a resounding "please go forward with this." I mean, every one of these arguments on this slide, you could blow a hole into it with simple math. And the one I enjoy the most is that the criminals are going to take over, because if Salem does it, and Danvers does it, and Linfield does it, why would somebody go to a criminal to buy it when they could go right next door? Within a mile, they can walk. So I don't buy it, you know? The people spoke once already about this. They voted against it. It has no effect on what happens in the rest of the state, and I would dare say that if, you know—if the state really, in its wisdom, decides to say that PBD would enjoy none of the tax benefit based on sales because they didn't have a dispensary, I would find that to be a difficult one for most communities to swallow, and I don't think that that's going to see the light of day, to be honest with you. And the last thing is, you know, we all talk about this like it's defined legislation that will be permanent and forever. Well, I lived in this city for a long time, and I remember at one point in time you couldn't buy a beer—a six-pack of beer—in a convenience store. That was never going to happen. We had regulated stores for that, packaged stores. You can go just about any convenience store. If we had more licenses, I guarantee you—if the state gave us more licenses, there'd be more alcohol sales in convenience stores as well. And that was not forever. None of this is forever. Legislation has changed with the stroke of a pen, and once in place, believe me, it'll perpetuate itself. And we decide today to ban it, so be it. I don't think it's—this is one where you've got to hop on the bandwagon to start off with, and/or you're going to miss the train, because, you know, the train is going to come by again and again and again as they continue to wind their way down to what they want to happen statewide. So as far as I'm concerned, the people did speak. They didn't vote in favor of it, so—and I don't hear them here asking us, "Please, don't vote on this." They're not here. You know, last week, we had probably 75—70 residents show up based on items that we were dealing with, and they spoke their voice. I don't hear any residents here. Is there a PBD resident here that wants to say, "Don't do this, councillor, please, don't do this"? Not one. So as far as I'm concerned, it's a done deal. I'll support what the mayor's recommending.
Councilor Garabedian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I had the opportunity of being in Colorado a few months ago in Denver and walking down 16th Street, which has a marijuana store on almost every corner. And I got to tell you, it wasn't a pleasant walk, walking down that street. Lot of restaurants, lot of bars, but I didn't feel comfortable. The people I was with didn't feel comfortable. And for us, as a city—and I've been an elected official for 25 years—have never thought that we would have to sell marijuana to keep our taxes low, as we're one of the lowest in the state. We have one of the best cash reserves in the state, and we didn't do it by putting marijuana stores in every corner. We have industrial parks, hotels, malls. That's how we do it, you know? We don't need to do that, and, you know, if other cities and towns want to do it, that's up to you guys. We have—our city fiscally is more responsible and more active than a lot of cities and towns in this whole North Shore. I love Salem, it's great. They don't need to sell marijuana either in the stores. I see you laughing, it's good, but you know what? It's true. We don't need it, and you can't tell me that nobody's got killed by somebody smoking some marijuana in a car going back some years ago or even recently. We don't see that in front of us, and I'm sure that's happened, just like somebody gets killed walking across the street. Do we not walk across the street? Or do we just say, "Let's take the crosswalks off and just run"? So I'm opposed to it. I'm going to support the mayor. I think as long as—and maybe it's—as long as, again, I've been on this council, I would never dream of having to vote for marijuana to help our tax base. Thank you.
Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to agree with both Councilor Gouvel's assessment and Councilor Garabedian. This is not what we're about. And as Councilor Gouvel said, there is not one PBD resident here opposing us on this Councilor Garabedian cited the tax base and our cash reserve, and we're in a pretty comfortable position right now. We're not the other communities that—such as Salem. I can't speak for what their cash reserve is, but I know that their taxes are high, and they're probably looking at it as a means to help fund their budget, but this is not what we are, and as Councilor Gouvel said, the train will come back again, and we may have the opportunity—I need some help from somebody. Are we putting this on the ballot next year, Tim? No, it's not going on the ballot like was discussed, or the opportunity to put it on the ballot. It's not, correct?
No, I'm sure Attorney Smazinski could answer that better, but the new legislation required that it—that it—not be a ballot item because the question failed in PBD, we can take this route. That's my understanding.
Attorney Smazinski, can you just clarify that, please?
Mr. President, members of the council, good evening. You may recall when we did the original presentation relative to the dispensaries. We did review, and I just want to pull it out—if I can just flip to it pretty quickly. The parameters relative to municipalities voting against recreational marijuana in the state referendum. And what we examined was the fact that the legislature, as a result of the July amendment, allowed the legislative bodies of towns and cities that voted against it to legislatively act on it up until 2018. And if you didn't act until the end of 2018, then you'd have to wait until after '19 to have a referendum. And that had to be, again, compared and analyzed with the fact that we had a moratorium in effect that was going to come to an end, and its sunset was going to happen, you know, before those time periods. So the question becomes—if you're going to act, you know, you're at least legislatively spurned to act sooner than later. Does that answer your question?
So we are—the window has closed to—we do not have to put it back on the ballot because—
Right.
In lay terms, please.
It's odd. It had to be explained by the AG's office to many municipalities, but in communities like ours, you can't use the referendum mechanism to determine this until a couple years from now.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, while you're at the podium, you're done, Councilor Gould, right? I just had a question. If—from a legal perspective—if
Yeah.
—the ban was voted in, and then the community decided that they would want to look at the issue again, how would—how does that play out timeline-wise?
Well, look, again, to simplify it, Dave Gouvel—Councilor Gouvel hit the nail on the head. The train just doesn't leave, and it's gone forever. You know, you're not just seeing the caboose. You're going to hear about this as elected officials year in and year out. There's no end to the possibility of the body amending this ban and carving out exceptions or repealing it in its entirety. And you remember, our ordinance does have a referendum procedure that, at some point in time, could be accessed. There's a couple ways you can do it. So this is a live issue, and I have to tell you, you know, you talk about each of the three gentlemen that have spoken thus far. They have good points, and, you know, this whole idea of analyzing the issue and how it's going to all unfold. I think everyone in the room agrees that, you know, there's never enough analysis with something as important of an issue like this. But I guess the point to be made is, if you open the door now and allow it in without knowing what's out there and over the horizon—or only have a glimpse as to what "over the horizon" means by what Councilor Garabedian said about his trip down Colorado—you can ban it, you can analyze it, and you can come back to it. But I will tell you, once you open the door, you're never going to take away something that you've given. So, Tom, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Mr. Smazinski.
Well, it doesn't answer my question, Mike. If you could come back for a second. We can only deal with what's on the books today. What's on the books today is that the legislature passed—and as Councilor Gould likes to say, "For the layman at home," the legislature passed the fact that this body could choose to either ban it or they could get the public to vote on it. My question specifically was, and under the current conditions, the current laws, structure, if we vote tonight to ban it, the—when—if there was an—if there was an upheaval and people wanted to look at that again, when could they? How could they go back? How could we look at it again? Could they not put on the ballot? Could it come up in November of 2018? Is that a no? Is the first time it would come up in November of 2019? I'm just trying to understand—with what we have today, the framework today—I'm not looking for commentary, I'm not looking for opinions, I'm looking for factual how it's written so that I could explain it to constituent—oh, you could explain it to a constituent right now—how it would work.
Okay. What the legislature did to towns and cities like ours is said, "Your legislature can vote and determine the issue with finality in the present time." The only time that you're going to be able to do a referendum that's binding is not until after 2019, and provided you don't do anything legislatively. Now, that's one part of the answer. The other part of the answer—and I'm sorry I wasn't clear—is that we have an initiative referendum petition process within our city ordinance as is. Now, there may be a group, there may be an order of this council to send the question of recreational marijuana sales in PBD through that route, or you're left with whatever the determination is tonight, okay? I mean, again, there's two hot wheels tracks of two different procedures that are running parallel to another, but they don't cross over.
Mr. President, if I may to help you—if I can help you with that, remember, we're making a zoning change. We are the body that can change that zoning. So in the future, if we think the community wants it, we start with the process of changing the zoning that we're going to create tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just would like to add one more thing. You know, you hear about that, you know, whole idea of, "Oh, my God, that idea is like trying to grab mercury on the tablecloth." It just—you know, you grab it, and it shoots out in 20 different directions. This morning—this morning, the Mass. Menace Little Lawyers Association was hit with a listserv email, and it's the press release out of the State House. I'm sure Representative Walsh knows about it, and there's literally all the pros from Senator President Rosenberg relative to, you know, prospective expectations of the erosion of control over recreational marijuana and, you know, the prospect of the likelihood that it's just going to come to many municipalities. Now, he's not talking about any legislation. He's just harkening the fact that this is a hard thing to get your arms around, and that's why the theme of, you know, conservatism—well, I'm not going to use that word—but, you know, proceeding cautiously, you know, is advisable. And it's not all that inconsistent with what the three men have talked about, about analyzing things, you know, in detail before you take a particular step.
Councilor Walsh.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I am a little miffed at a couple things here. One is, I don't know what has changed in the last two months, because on September 28th, the Legal Affairs Committee reported out, because we did have discussions, we did talk about the ramifications of, you know, what happens if you allow retail marijuana or disallow it. We talked about the referendum process. We talked about all these things. On September 28th, that report was presented to this committee, and a unanimous vote was to send the zoning language to the planning board. So here we are, tonight, to make that decision, and all of a sudden, we think—some people think it should go back to committee, and I'm only suggesting that the discussions have already occurred. The other thing that is a little bit troubling is the comment that there is legislation coming, so you better watch for it, so you won't get any tax revenue. That proposal was an amendment to the last budget session that the legislature—
you know, proceeding cautiously, you know, is advisable. And it's not all that inconsistent with what the three men have talked about, about analyzing things, you know, in detail before you take a particular step.
Council Walsh?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I am a little miffed at a couple things here. One is, I don't know what has changed in the last two months, because on September 28th, the Legal Affairs Committee reported out, because we did have discussions, we did talk about the ramifications of, you know, what happens if you allow retail marijuana or disallow it. We talked about the referendum process. We talked about all these things. On September 28th, that report was presented to this committee, and a unanimous vote was to send the zoning language to the planning board. So here we are, tonight, to make that decision, and all of a sudden, we think, some people think it should go back to committee. And I'm only suggesting that the discussions have already occurred. The other thing that is a little bit troubling is the comment that there is legislation coming, so you better watch for it, so you won't get any tax revenue. That proposal was an amendment to the last budget session that the legislature went through, and it was soundly defeated. And I would suggest to you that if it came as a piece of legislation, the same result would occur. To me, this issue is about the image of the city, and what we want ourselves, as the mayor said, what we want to be as a city. And I think we all talked about that, and I thought we were all pretty much on the same page. All of a sudden, we have this idea that we are going to be missing out on millions and millions of dollars in revenue. And I would suggest to you that some of the examples that are used is, look what Salem with their medicinal marijuana facility has been able to give the city of Salem the last year. And they did pretty well. And look what they'll do, any community, with more retail facilities. But there's only a finite number here. And as these facilities come online in any community, it's going to mean that the significant amount of money that one community got because they had the only facility is not going to be the same in another year or two. So this suggestion that Peabody is going to be a backwater if we don't move forward with retail marijuana, I think it's just not, it's not genuine to me. So hearing the comments tonight, I think reinforces my position and the discussions and the decisions that we made from Legal Affairs and this council unanimously sent to the board, the planning board. So, you know, I understand in some respects that people want to look at it further, but in the end, and after hearing what I heard tonight, I'm resolved to stick with my original position.
Council Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I agree. Look, I personally am not in favor of selling recreational marijuana in Peabody, but we do have a moratorium till the end of next year. In terms of what the state regulatory board is going to do, the Cannabis Control Commission has just been formed, there's no investigative staff, there's no licensing staff, and the laws are changing so rapidly that I don't want to be reactionary in terms of, "What's ban medical? No, no, we can't do that." So Council Turco's point is, let's vet it properly in terms of, let some of it come to us to see where we're going, instead of, "Okay, we're going to change the zoning back, we're for it, we're against it." That's not the way it should be. And I think you have to look somewhat at the bigger picture of what's going to happen here. We just had three medical marijuana clinics come to this community promoting themselves, okay? And I, you know, we call it "medical," but I had some conversations with somebody from Gloucester today who talked about how medical, how you go about getting a medical prescription. So you can't go to your general practitioner and get a prescription for marijuana, because it's illegal federally. So there's going to be certain doctors that will specialize in it. Most of them don't want to touch it. So you're going to go to your doctor and tell him your symptoms, and he's going to say, "Okay, you're a candidate for a medical marijuana card." He's not prescribing you a dosage or telling you what it's about. You're going to get charged $200 to be registered with the state, then you're going to get your card, and then you're going to walk into a medical marijuana clinic to buy whatever you want to buy. And the person behind the desk is making 13 or 14 bucks an hour, and he's going to say, "Hey, try this one, try that one." So, and the reason I'm getting to this is that if you don't think that those medical marijuana clinics don't have a business model for recreational marijuana, you're mistaken. It's all in the works. And so we're sitting here asking a medical marijuana facility for 3% of the gross, we want them to pay real estate taxes, we want them to pay a host agreement, which I have no clue, but there's money involved, then when medical, when then recreational hits, their sales are going to plummet, and they're going to want to sell recreational. And if they can't, and they can't make a go of it because they're paying all these fees and taxes, they might close up here. And I'm not saying that's right or that's wrong. Alls I'm saying is, let's get all, maybe we should vet our special permits and get those agreements from that, whether it's one, whether it's two, whether it's three, and find out what we can and what we can't do. And I'm not, I'm not for it, but I would like to just see it, we got the moratorium, you can't do anything. So what's the rush to vote it out? Wait till, by the spring, you should have, you'll know what the details of that host agreement with these medical clinics are, then you can make an informed decision what you want to do with recreational. Because they might say, "If we can't sell..." They can sit up there and tell you anything they want to get you to approve their letter of non-opposition. But we'll see when recreational hits. They're going to have a big problem not being able to sell recreational. I don't know if the state, the cannabis commission, can say, you know, at some point, "Yeah, you can." It's not the legislature. The cannabis commission is going to be the one making these decisions. And I would just, like I said, I'm not for it, but I don't see the need to just rush. And I agree with the mayor. I don't want to see people looking like Colorado and smoking it, but we're not saying we're going to approve it, but I would just like to see it, you know, go back for a little more vetting, get that medical marijuana permit in place of who you're picking, whether it's one or two or whoever it is, then you can make an informed decision. But if you keep jumping from place to place, and as far as the, look, I've heard some of this discussion, and do we want to treat it like alcohol? I mean, you know, and then, and what I really find difficult to accept is, you know, allowing people to grow it in their home. It's totally uncontrollable. Are you going to pull a permit with a building inspector to grow marijuana in your house? And I believe you're allowed to hold up to 10 ounces of marijuana in your home? I thought that was the law. And what are you going to do with 10 ounces of marijuana in your home? You only smoke so much of it. So the next logical step is, you're going to sell it. So there's going to be a black market there with that also, too. So just, I don't support it, but I would recommend putting it into committee for a short, tiled, longer, have more discussions, wait until you get that permit in place, and then say, "You know what? We don't want it. They've agreed to it. We're good. So be it." Thank you.
I have a few comments I'd like to make. You know, I've heard a lot of different points brought up, and sometimes, you know, just like you can point holes in numbers and things of that nature, I also feel that things change. You know, when people voted no versus yes a year ago, it was illegal. Today, it's legal. And that's a whole different parameter than a year ago. So the rules of the game have changed. It's legal in the state of Massachusetts. And we sat here last week, and, you know, it's about the money. And how do we know about the money? We had three people, we had a former narcotics agent, we had a head of police, chief of police from Rochester, New Hampshire, and a sheriff. All these three people, I bet five years ago, on the record, they never would have thought they would have been standing up there. And do I think they were standing up there really pounding medical marijuana, the benefits? No. And if you folks do, that's your right. But I think that we all know, you know, why they were there. And so I looked at this, and all due respect to my colleague, and, you know, it was in subcommittee, and it was voted, and all due respect to my colleague who talks about the number of Peabody people who are not here tonight. This is not a special permit. There was no notices that went out. I'll say tonight that I think we did a good job and put our due diligence on the medical marijuana. I know myself, I put a lot of time into it, I'm sure some of you did, but there has been, if you walked down Main Street today and you asked 100 people, there was going to be a vote to ban recreational marijuana, "Yes, do you know about that?" They didn't know. They don't know. I don't believe that. That's my personal opinion. So to say that we have, that's my issue, is vetting it properly, having the dialogue that I feel should be taken, take place. You know, I put it out on social media, I'm sure many of you saw that, and the comments I got, for many, many, many people, were about sidewalks, roads, bans, schools. And I hear what Council Garabedian says. I understand what you're saying, Council Garabedian, maybe we're better than that. We don't have to fund those things. But you know what? Everyone talks about that during election season, and I just think that it's a possibility we have to at least look at it. And that's why I agree with Council Turco. So to say that we said no a year ago, and the people say they do the same today, I think that's the lazy way out. Maybe if you're so sure of our position, that if you're in the no proponent, you don't want it, then what's it wrong to vet it? What's the worst thing that can happen? Some people come and get up here, and you can call up your friends if you're against it, and they'll come up and speak against it, maybe a few will speak in favor of it. But we have a moratorium, and that's what I think was, I agree that we did that, and I'm happy that we did that. But when you have a state cannabis commission that is still formulating its rules, its regulations, its processes, its licenses, and they haven't come out with that, you know, you slam the door shut, who knows? I just don't think we have to slam the door shut today. We basically have closed it, but we have the opportunity to do it 100% shut. So I think that the dialogue, in my opinion, started tonight, but you can choose to disagree with me, but I really do believe that. And that when the articles are in the paper and things of that nature, then you might get some phone calls, and then the dialogue might come. And maybe the dialogue is, "No, no, no." Maybe it's, "Yes, yes, yes," you know? But I think that to just throw the baby out with the bathwater, I don't feel comfortable with that. I think also, Council Sinowitz, many of the points he brought up, you know, fall in line with how I feel. Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to use your words, I don't think there's anything by advancing this tonight that would cause us to slam the door shut. It's, by taking action on this tonight, there's nothing that precludes us from taking further action on it going forward. It's, we've heard it expressed a number of different ways, this train's going to come around again, you've heard there's a number of different mechanisms to approach it from the city solicitor. That can continue, but that doesn't mean that we need to leave this as an open issue tonight. I support this prohibition, and I, for one, would like to take action on it tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Sinowitz.
I just want to just make it clear, and I'm not sure, it's one thing you can take the action tonight, but what happens if the vote fails? Then you can't get a second crack at it. So think about what you want to do. I think that vet it properly, get your medical in place, and then ban it. But don't do it now, because the way I feel right now is, I'd like to see it go to committee to be properly vetted, and then if, I'm just afraid, like, I don't want, that's the way I like to see, but it could fail. I don't know how everybody's going to, but if it fails, then you have a bigger problem, because then I don't think you could bring it back. I'm just guessing, but I'm just...
A point of information.
Sure, Council.
Every ordinance is eligible to be revisited every session, and this is a session where at the end of a session, you'll have a new council coming in January. If this were to fail tonight, which it might, it has the ability, right now, it would have the power of, if you didn't accept this, you've got, we're in the same place we would have been if we had never brought it up. And every council, new council, during their term, has the ability to go in and change any ordinance they want through the same process. You start with another hearing, you start with another process, another subcommittee. So as far as I'm concerned, it is not over if it fails tonight.
Council Sinowitz.
Point taken. My question would be, since the state gave us the power to ban it locally, we made a vote to ban it locally, does the state ordinances or regulations supersede what we just did and say, "Okay, you made a vote to ban it"? And that's what, I understand what you're saying about the ordinances, you can change it, but we're talking about a state, we're talking about what the state just mandated that allowed us to do. So I don't know, maybe, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if he has any opinion on it.
I just want to say one other thing, too, is that, you know, there's a reason why, when you go in the voting booth, you vote in private. And for me personally, and I've expressed this to many of you on the council, 15,000 said no, 13,000 in this community said yes. And you can tell me that I make many votes on many things, so I should have no problem voting on this one, but I do. And I have a hard time taking it out of the hands of the voters because the climate has changed. It was illegal last November, the day before the election. Now it's legal. And that dialogue, good or bad, whatever it is, and we know they, you get your pros and your cons in the lobby, it's, they pour tons of money, but you know what? People smile, have to decide what they want to do, but like I said, there's a reason why you go in that voting booth, and you pull the curtain, and I am not going to take that right away from the citizens of Peabody. I feel strongly about that on this particular issue, because it is such a, it's a charged issue. It is, we know that.
Council Greville.
Well, I clearly always thought that the elective process was that you put your name on the ballot to represent people who have similar beliefs, not, you know, otherwise, why would we have a council, right? Because if everything was to be done by referendum, and we would need no deciding body, just everything that we need to talk about, special permits and all, let's just put it on a ballot and let the people decide, and the majority wins. Well, in this case, what's the difference, 13,000 versus 12,000 versus 10,000? If there was a bigger majority, would it make a difference? I think you're elected, my belief is, anyway, I think I'm elected, to express my beliefs, which is why people vote for me. So you think of it as, this might be the lazy way out? I don't think it's the lazy way out. It's a belief that I have, I'm allowed to express it, the people who voted to me voted for my belief, period. So I'm sticking to where I am. I think we ought to vote the issue and decide. As a matter of fact, I'll make a motion to move the question.
Motion to move the question, no further debate, roll call vote.
Yes.
Council Garabedian, Greville.
Yes.
Turco.
No.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Metzulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Sasla.
No.
Motion carries to move the question eight to two.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Further motion? Motion, motion to close the public hearing, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
I'd like to make the motion to adopt Section 6.14 as presented this evening on the marijuana establishments forbidden, including Section 2, Section 3, as read into the record.
Roll call vote, please. Council Sinowitz.
I just want to make it clear that I'm voting no, because I do, I do support to ban, but I would like to see it come back. I just want to make it clear on why, what I'm, why, the way I'm voting. So I'm going to vote no, because I do... I'm, on why, the way I'm voting. So, I am gonna vote no, because I do think it need, it should go back after those clinics get vetted, and then we'll get a better picture of where we're gonna be in the spring. So, just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Councils Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
No.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinewitz.
No.
Sasla.
No.
Motion fails.
Move reconsideration.
Reconsideration, hoping same shall not prevail. Reconsideration of the vote?
No, hoping for reconsideration to come back and give people an opportunity to vote again.
Okay.
Another vote. Gould?
This is a motion to reconsider. Councilor Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
No.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinewitz.
No.
Sasla.
No.
Motion to reconsider carries, seven to three.
I'd like to move the question, once again, to adopt Section 6.14, marijuana establishments forbidden, including Section 2 and 3, as read into the record. So moved.
Roll call vote.
Councilors Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
No.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinewitz.
No.
Sasla.
No.
Motion fails, seven to three.
Just for clarification, under the rules, because we've reconsidered this, it can't be taken up again in this session, and would have to be taken up again in the next session with the next council.
Thank you, Council Gravel. Item 4B, entertainment license. Would the city clerk please read the notice?
Notice is here about given that the city council, the city of Peabody, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, November 16, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Lloyd Wagon Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., on the application from Guidance Group, LLC, DBA, North Shore Lobster, 203 Newbury Street, Peabody, Mass., requesting a transfer of an entertainment license from the Sea Witch Restaurant for use of televisions at Sed 203, Newbury Street, Peabody, Mass. Peabody City Council, Councilor Joel D. Sasla, City Council President.
Petitioner, come to the podium. Guidance Group. Once again, we're looking for the applicant Guidance Group, LLC, North Shore Lobster, for the transfer of the entertainment license. It will recess to the next hearing. Okay, we're gonna recess that to the next hearing. No objection. Item 4C, special, motion, have a motion to recess that? So moved, Council Gould. Thank you. I mean, Council Walsh, thank you. 4C, special permit, One Main Street LLC. Would the city clerk please read the public notice?
Notice is here about given that the city council, the city of Peabody, acting as a special parent granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, November 16, 2017, at 7:30 PM, in the Frank Lloyd Wagon Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., on the application from One Main, Peabody, LLC, 28 Jennifer Lane, Peabody, Mass., for a special permit to allow the premises to be used as a multifamily mixed-use building containing a total of 20 residential units at One Main Street, Peabody, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.1, Section 5, 6.1, 9.2.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. Peabody City Council, Councilor Joel D. Sasla, City Council President.
Thank you. Counselor?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ethan Von Zalitis. I'm an attorney practicing law at 246 Yanos Street in Peabody, and I'm here on behalf of the petitioner with Mr. Pat Tedesco as manager of the LLC. And I realize that everybody's more than familiar with the O'Shea Building, situated at the corner of Foster and Main Street. It's a three-story building. It contains about 30,000 square feet of area. It's situated on a lot that contains about 7,400 square feet, and we are in the B.C. zoning district. I can't see without glasses here. I believe the first floor was last used, or what I call the street level, was last used as a Chinese restaurant, and then the second and third floors were a combination of off, business offices, and I think there was a karate boxing studio. Currently, the building is vacant. At the time that Mr. Tedesco purchased the building, he's gone in, and he's totally gutted the interior of the building. This building obviously is in need of a lot of love, needs to be revitalized, and to that end, he desires to perform a total renovation to the building by converting the second and the third floors into 20 residential apartments, and then to continue to use the street level, or the first floor, as a restaurant. The second floor is gonna contain 10 apartments. Two of those would be one-bedroom, eight would be studios. The third floor would also contain 10 apartments. Five of those would be one-bedroom, and five of those would be studios. And on average, the apartments are gonna contain anywhere between, say, 390 to up to 946 square feet of living area. In addition, the second and the third floors will each contain a laundry room that will be between 100 and 150 square feet. They'll have two washing, two wash machines and two dryers on each level for use by the, by the tenants. The second, third floors are also gonna have the benefit of five to six storage units that will range between 50 to 150 square feet of area that can be used by the tenants to store any of their excess personal property. And as referred to earlier, the street level, about 6,500 to 7,000 square feet of that floor is gonna be utilized as a restaurant, and we all know it's gonna be the new home for Brody's Restaurant. We're also anticipating installing a mailroom in the ground level, so that there'll be mailboxes for all the tenants. And we'll also be installing a storage area where when tenants have packages delivered, they can be left in a safe and secure location, rather than being left into the entranceway or any of the common hallways. As you can see from our site plan, the building does cover the entire lot, so we don't have the benefit of any onsite parking. And in addition, our zoning ordinance requires that we have 20 parking spaces for this particular proposal. However, Section 9.2.1 of our zoning ordinance does allow for a parking management plan to be proposed to the council for their approval in lieu of providing onsite parking. And that parking management plan has nine criteria. Numbers 2, 3, 7, and 8 just aren't applicable, since we don't have onsite parking, and we don't own any contiguous property in the same entity as the O'Shea Building. But with respect to the remaining criteria, our parking plan would be satisfied by utilizing the four or five municipal parking lots that are in walking distance to our building. Each of these buildings has a limited number of available residential parking passes that can be purchased by the general public. Just across the street, on Foster Street, is a municipal lot, and I believe that has 13 available parking passes that can be purchased. Further up Main Street, at the intersection of Main and Nichols Lane, is another municipal lot. I believe that has 12 available parking passes that can be purchased. There's also a municipal parking lot next to Dunkin' Donuts that has nine available parking spaces. And directly across the street from Dunkin' Donuts on Railroad Ave, behind the courthouse building, is another municipal lot, and that has 19 available parking passes. And in addition, there's the Mill Street Municipal Parking Lot, and that has 27 available parking passes. All of these municipal lots are within easy walking distance from the petitioner's property. The petitioner will also obtain from the city clerk 20 of these passes and make them available to his tenants. We'll also incorporate into all of our leases, as required by the parking plan, and acknowledgement that there is no onsite parking available, and that the tenant may purchase, if they are available, a residential parking pass directly from the petitioner, or from the city, in order to utilize these municipal lots. We'll also inform all the tenants that their cars cannot be parked in the same parking space for more than 48 hours, along with a disclosure that during the snow emergencies, that their vehicles need to be removed from the municipal lot by 8:00 AM the following morning, or as they're instructed by the police department. And just as a point of information, Mr. Tedesco does own, in a budding parcel, or a budding building. I believe it's Three Main Street. On the ground level, is a commercial use, is being renovated for a Mexican restaurant. The second and third floors contain 10 apartments, and that building does have the benefit of 10 parking spaces at the rear of the building, and one of those parkings, parking spaces is handicapped. And although we don't own that building in the same entity as we own the O'Shea Building, as required under the parking plan, he is willing to designate another parking space there as handicapped, and allow those two handicap spaces to be utilized by any handicapped tenant that resides in either of the two buildings. If granted the permit, obviously, the entire building's gonna be totally renovated. It's gonna have all-new electrical wiring, all-new plumbing. It's gonna have new floors, new ceilings, walls, hallways, light fixtures, bedrooms, kitchens, and other amenities. He's also gonna install an elevator, where currently the building has none. The building will be fully sprinkled throughout the entire building, together with a modern fire alarm system. And the end result's gonna be approximately a $4 million investment to create a totally renovated mixed-use building that's gonna conform to all of today's building codes, along with conforming to all of today's safety fire regulations. I believe this proposal's an excellent use of the property. We are on a bus route for those tenants that don't have the benefit of a car. We're in easy walking distance to many of the restaurants and retail establishments and personal service establishments that are within the downtown area. And I do have Mr. Tedesco with me this evening, and we'll try to answer any questions that either the council or the public may have. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Anybody like to speak in, in favor of the proposal?
Good evening, counsel. This is a wonderful, wonderful moment for the city of Peabody. It's a day I've been looking forward to for a long time now. We made a decision a few years ago to invest in our downtown, and it wasn't an easy decision. Some people said that, you know, Peabody Square is not worth it, even some elected officials, I mean, that made comments that an investment in the downtown is not a good investment. But we, as a board, decided to go forward and invest in our downtown, because we felt there was potential here. We felt with the, the right type of investment, and get the right people in here, things could change, and we could have a downtown that we're proud of. So, what did we do? We've always been, had a reputation as being an area that floods. When you drive, when you drove downtown a few years ago, I felt that it was not an attractive area. It was unsafe. We recall that the year, the 2011, I believe it was, before we, we voted on the Mass Works Project, the first Mass Works Project, we had four pedestrians that were struck, one of them killed in Peabody Square. It needed to make, needed to have change. It needed to be invested. It needed, needed to make a real commitment to doing some work downtown. And we did. We invested $1.2 million in creating the Scouting Woods Retention Pond that holds back water that typically flowed downtown from Centennial Park, and that's working magnificently. Now, are flooding issues over? I know, I don't want to say that. But the numbers bear it out, that we're in a much better situation, and the city's ability to manage water is much better than it was years ago. What did we do next? We invested in a Mass Works Project, in which it was $1.8 million project to redesign Main Street. We put in new pavement, new sidewalks, new crosswalks, new trees, new lighting. It was a significant investment. I can't say that it cured traffic issues, that would not be fair for me to say, but the goal was to make it safer for pedestrians, safer for vehicles, and to beautify the area. We accomplished that. The second Mass Works Project was a $3.2 million project in which we redesigned Peabody Square, moving the monument in front of the courthouse to create a plaza area. We put in new crosswalks, new sidewalks, again, planted new trees, put in new lighting, made it ADA compliant. Those were important decisions that we made. And what the hope was from all of that is that we would be able to partner with good people, good developers, people that wanted to make a difference in the city of Peabody. We all know, we've met good developers, we've met developers that do not have a good reputation. The city's been burned in the past, but the city has also been fortunate to get good people. What we have today in front of us is a good man, Pat Tedesco. From the very beginning, I was struck by his genuineness and sincerity. He's a Peabody person. His family is a Peabody family. He's invested deeply in our community. He wants to see Peabody succeed, and he's making it happen. I couldn't be more happy to be working with him and his family to make a difference in Peabody Square. This project is what we had all had hoped for. Commercial on the first floor, I want a great business that's gonna be going in there, and then excellent apartments up above, because that's what we need. We need a mix, commercial and residential. This is the first step for us. This is why we put in all that time and effort, and even if, even when some people were critical about a lack of vision here in the city. We stuck to our guns. We invested where we needed to. We've made improvements. We've made a difference. And now we're getting good people here to invest in our city, and we're gonna have an excellent project, and that's just the beginning. Three more restaurants that have come, one of those restaurants is also Mr. Tedesco's property, La Siesta. They'll be coming in the spring. Wait till you see that restaurant. We have a brewery coming in. Wait till you see that brewery coming in. Things are happening in our square, and I hope people recognize that. We're having pop-up pubs continually, and we're getting hundreds, even over 1,000 people to come to the last pop-up pubs. Hopefully, people come and see what we're doing downtown. Things are happening. The improvements have been made. We've made the investment together. It's something we should be proud of. And now we have good people like Pat Tedesco and his family that want to be a part of it, and I couldn't be happier to have his involvement. I urge you to support this investment, and I can't wait to, I can't wait to get started. Thank you, Pat.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of the project? Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Tim Brown, and I'm coming forward for the Northeast Ark. We own property, 22 Foster Street, so right behind the building, as well as renting space down the street as well on Main Street. I'm coming with two hats on tonight, as from the Northeast Ark. One is business owners downtown who are trying to invest within the city and create some small niche opportunities for people who want to come into Peabody. Having the building with the renovations that have already happened, we've seen a visual transformation in downtown, but the plans that I've seen, that's just always gonna create a better opportunity, a better visual appearance, as well as more customers coming into our private businesses that we're trying to operate. My other hat is as a human service provider, and being able to meet Pat on a couple occasions, and really getting to know him a little bit more, hearing about his families, and his involvement in the community. And he's someone that has demonstrated to me, and has expressed to me, his investment in the city, and wanting to see something grow. And so I think when you have somebody who's from the city, wanting to support the city, it's something that you really should look at. Thank you.
Anybody like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anybody else like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anybody like to speak in opposition to the petitioner? Anybody like to speak in opposition to the petitioner? Anybody like to speak in opposition? Being none. Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. You've heard the description of the project, and you've seen the drawings. In fact, there are a couple of new sheets that were passed out tonight. Some are duplicates of what you already have, so I'm moved to receive the late communication. So moved.
The motion in favor, opposed, the vote?
This is an iconic building in the downtown. Actually, I'm sure you've all done this at some point, but when you Google Peabody, a picture of the O'Shea Building comes up. This building has tremendous architectural character, and it's listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It's an important building for Peabody. For decades, this building has been utilized in ways that added a little to the downtown, and in most recent years, it's been vacant and condemned. Tonight, the council has the opportunity to help bring this building back to a productive use. The residential portion of the project, which is the subject of this hearing... The residential portion of the project, which is the subject of this hearing, along with the associated restaurant project on the first floor, is going to have a beneficial impact to the downtown. If approved, this project will be the first use of the new B.C. parking arrangement. The petitioner has provided a parking management plan, and it will, as Attorney Von Zalid has pointed out, rely heavily on the use of the municipal lots. I have confirmed with the police department and the city clerk that they're advancing the implementation of the new parking arrangement, and it should be fully in place by the time these units are ready for occupancy. I have been contacted by some area residents that do have concerns about parking. While some of these concerns are valid, I believe we need to give this new arrangement a chance to work. I also have a commitment from the police department to step up enforcement efforts as necessary should there become problems. I have been actively engaged with the applicant and his attorney. Mr. Tedesco and his partner and son, Steve Tedesco, clearly are committed to making this endeavor work in the mutual best interest of themselves, the city, and the downtown. I've proposed a number of conditions. I should add, they have been a pleasure to work with throughout this process. I've proposed a number of conditions to which the applicant is fully agreeable, and in most cases, these conditions simply reinforce what you've already seen as statements made in the application, and they are only there for the purpose of clarity. I fully support this application, and at this time, I would defer to other councillors.
Thank you. Council Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Tedesco through our colleague on the school committee, Mr. Joe Amico, about a year ago, and from the moment I met him, Pat, in his philosophy was, how can I help? He found out we were building a black box theater in Mr. Brown's building there at the arc, and he wanted to know how he could help. He came in for a tour. He said, I want to help the community. I'm a Peabody guy. I want to do what's right for myself, but more importantly, for the community. And seeing what he's done so far and the way he's handled the process, and his grandson over there is totally excited about this deal. Seeing what he's done is an absolute pleasure. I hope Pat has the opportunity to do more things downtown because he has the vision, but he has the common sense to realize that there's an opportunity here. So I wish you well, Mr. Tedesco. Thank you.
Council Gavell.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Council McGinn, for the words of encouragement in terms of what Mr. Tedesco is trying to do. I, too, have had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Tedesco, and, you know, it's a rare sight when you see a developer show up at a pop-up pub and, you know, just look at a building and say, imagine what that's going to be like. I mean, that, to me, spoke volumes about his commitment to that downtown, and he's been to a number of events, and, you know, he's watched people who are very excited, feel the excitement that he has over the redevelopment of that building and bringing online what we all believe is a necessary ingredient to bring life back into the downtown. I'm finishing my 10th year on this council, and I remember coming in and, you know, I guess I have to agree with the mayor. It was pretty depressing to walk into downtown. I own a building down there, and it was pretty depressing to look at the amount of vacancy that was there, and, you know, to do all of the research and participate in literally hundreds of meetings as a part of first PDAT and then the Main Streets, Peabody Main Streets Group, and to hear from not only this developer, but literally six, seven, eight other developers who came and talked to us as a group and said, you know, you really need to stimulate mixed use in the downtown area. You really need to get restaurants and shops and improve the facades and, you know, all the things that are well within our reach. And we had, you know, we had some difficulties with disagreements over, you know, parking and other things, but, you know, the bottom line is, I think everybody that participated in those debates and those discussions all agreed on one thing, that this was the right way to go. I always believed that it was going to take one, just one developer who would give us a chance, just one, because success breeds success. People want to be in a place that's happening, and if one does a great job, and that's why it was important to get a good developer, one good developer moving something forward would help the others get the courage to invest the dollars. Council Sinowitz and I, you know, and Council Gould, we own businesses, and, you know, you have to have confidence in what you're investing in when you own a business or when you're putting a building up or when you're doing things that you're going to get some return on that investment because you're not just doing it, you know, out of the goodness of your heart. You're doing it because you think it's the right thing to do, and it, you know, if it has a positive side, a win-win, you know, one for the city and one for the developer, then that's the greatest success that you can hope for. I think this is the one. He has a great vision for that property. His drawings, all the information that's been submitted to us, his attitude about doing things right, he's not looking for shortcuts, he's looking to get it really right, and I think this will finally give us that one that we were looking for, who might excite those others because there's some beautiful buildings down there, right across the street from him, going up the street from him, and every business down there will be the benefactor of his success. So I am a strong proponent of supporting him this evening. I hope everyone will, and I hope we'll do whatever we can to make this thing successful and fast so that others will follow. So thank you very much.
Council Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things. One, to the mayor. Mayor, you got me nervous because you said "denisco," not "to disco," so I got a little nervous on that. But, and one thing, when Mayor Torigian said he finally, we finally fixed the flooding on Foster Street, then a week later, we had a flood, so we never say that, but I know what you're talking, I know what you're talking about. But I have just a few questions. Number one, when you talk about trash, there's going to be no trash on the street anyway. You have a private area that's going to, for a trash removal?
No. If you're familiar with the building, when you go down Foster Street, there's actually a garage door that faces Foster Street, and that's where all of our rubbish facilities are.
Because there are some multi-use units that the residents throw their trash out on the street, and that's not what we want for our downtown. Has the loan been paid back from the CDA?
Yes. In fact, he could have bought the building for a lot less than he did, but he didn't want the city to lose out on their second mortgage, so he bid enough so that the city would not lose.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Can we talk just a little about market rate and affordable? It's at 15% affordable. Can you give us an idea what the studio in a one-bedroom would rent for, and what does affordable mean in terms of, you know, renting an apartment there?
I couldn't, but Pat could tell you what they'd probably be getting for rent.
So presently, it's going to be kind of hard to determine the amount of exact rent we're going to pay, that people are going to pay for one Main Street because we're probably close to a year away. But to give you a rough idea, we own three Main Streets, and a studio next door goes for $9.95, and a one-bedroom goes for $13.50. So I would assume it's not going to raise that much more.
Anyway, in terms of affordable, and I'm glad to see that there are some affordable units to go towards our, you know, our count. That's all I have for you, sir. Look, I think, I do have to commend the mayor. I wasn't a fan of the hotel when that, I just didn't think that was doable, but for this gentleman to come here and spend a $4-million investment on our downtown, you've got two great restaurants going in the bottom, so it's very financially sound for you on the surface. I don't know the background, but I think it's going to be a great project for the downtown. I think those two restaurants, Brody's, their issues over there with parking and visibility with those big glass windows and the signage, they're going to do a heck of a job over there. I am concerned about the parking, but let's throw it to the wind and let's hope for the best. My only question would be on the parking. I know in snow emergencies, you're required to be out of city lots. So was there a plan for the people that do buy a pass there? So if we had the red lights go on and then everybody got to be out of there?
I called the police department about that, and I forget which officer I spoke with, but the way it works is when the blue lights go on, obviously, everybody has to be off from street parking, and you're allowed to now use the municipal lots without paying. You put your cars there. Once the roads get cleared and the blue lights are off, now it's time to take the cars out of the municipal lots, put them back on the street so the city can clean those.
Okay, good. So somebody's being forethinking, you know, of what they're going to do, and I, you know, I wish you the best of luck. I think, I know that building very well. I spent a lot of time in that building on the third floor at Larry's place, and the building, it was just in tough shape, and I'm glad to hear you put in an elevator in because to get up to that third floor, man, that is rough. That is a rough. So you're making all the right investments, and I think you're going to be very successful, and I wish you the best of luck.
Council Garibidi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I've had the opportunity and the privilege of knowing Pat for about 25 years as we met when I was running a Dodge dealership on 114, and we have been friends for all that time, even though we don't see each other that much. It's like we never miss a beat. If it's three years go by, that's the kind of friend Pat is. Pat and I were standing in the pouring rain when I first ran for school committee. It was just me and him standing there. I don't know if you remember that, Pat. Still got the cold for it. But I can tell you this, there's no better person that can go in the downtown and do what he's going to do. He's loyal. He's solid. He has a great family, and I got to tell you, for me and in my city council career in the next couple of weeks, this is a great vote for me to have, to be able to do tonight. So I want to thank you. Thank you, mayor, and thank you, Pat.
Council Truss.
Thank you. Not so much as 25 years, but I know Pat and Kathy for over 20 years. They know him well, but what they're doing today is what they did then, and they did it with the schools, through involving the PTOs for the schools throughout the city. So I'm not surprised that they're investing into downtown as they invested in their street to have their family be close by. I've looked at these plans. It's exactly what we want, a studio and one bedroom. This is what our kids are looking to come back and Peabody live. They're looking for downtown in most cities across this nation. It's exactly what they are looking for. So again, I am so happy and be able to vote on this because it's like Christmas Day. What we're looking for, for a family man to be building it, and all the time he spent here in Peabody, the schools, his street, and now downtown. We'd be fools not to vote for this. Thank you.
Council Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I just want to say, as far as the downtown as a whole, I'm excited, and I never thought I'd say it, but I'm excited about everything that's going on down there, from the pop-up pubs to Tedesco family buying this building, and I can honestly say that I think that in 10 or 15 or 20 years, people are going to look back and say this was when it all began and the downtown took off. In Siesta, I was just talking to Council Gould, the siesta restaurant in Winthrop, if you haven't been there, it's incredible. They're the ones moving up to Peabody Square. Great restaurant. I'm excited about the brewery. It just seems, I mean, the mayor and Council McGinn have done a tremendous job trying to find a balance there, and I think they finally did it. So thank you both, and congratulations to the Tedesco family.
Council McCall.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Speaking about Mr. Tedesco, I just met him this year. My daughter Amber thinks the world of him and his wife, so that's where I get all my friends from, my daughter Amber, but anyways. Pat, I don't know if you know what you did. You took away the pool room, the rat hole. That's what we hung around when I was a teenager downstairs in that building. And I'll tell you, back in the '60s, when my gang was hanging around down here, that building needed work back then, and I think it's pretty courageous of you to come in there and take on that project, and it's pretty exciting for the city for what's going in there. And I do have to congratulate the mayor and Peter McGinn for putting the time in, drawing the right people, putting a vision together that I think may start our downtown moving. We've been trying to do that for years. We go back to Mayor Torigian's day of trying to liven up the downtown. I think the puzzle is starting to be put together. I'm very excited about it, and I thank you for being part of it. Thank you.
Council Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would be remiss if I did not also add my support to this project. One of the most fascinating things and exciting things is, you know, I've made the comment here during the course of my time that it would be nice to see lights on on the second floor in some of the buildings in downtown, and you're going to see that. You know, part of the reason people don't come down in the evenings is it was so dark, you know, so you don't, if you're going to go to a Walgreens, you're going to go to someplace that's more lighted. They're going to benefit from this. Everybody's going to benefit. When you look at the activity that you'll see, you'll have lights on the second floor, third floor, people coming and going, and that will encourage more people to be downtown in the evening. So I just think this is a welcome project. I do hope, as Council Gavell said, that it's the first of many. Hopefully, the Tedesco family would be willing to invest more, but let's get this one done. But I think it also, it really, it illustrates that the downtown area is really beginning a renaissance, and I'm looking forward to the ribbon cutting when these apartments are ready to be occupied. I won't be a city councillor, but I hope I still get an invitation to this because I think that's going to be a very, very proud day for the city of Peabody.
You'll be on the list.
Thank you, Council Walsh. And I just want to say, and I don't know if Mr. Tedesco remembers this, but I was on a day off that day, and I said, I'm going to go down, I'm going to watch that auction, and there was no way you were going to lose that building, and I applaud you for that, and I saw that, and I saw the commitment you had that day in that auction. You know what I'm talking about. So I appreciate it, and I appreciate also that, the fact that you've got some pictures up there, you've got some awnings up there, you've put your flag in the square. We're here. We're going to get it done. Come talk to us today because we're moving fast forward. So I appreciate it. To the mayor, I applaud what happened down in Peabody Square. Once again, like other councils, I hope it's first of many, and I wish you the best of luck. Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. And through you to Council Sinowitz, just one of the points you raised with respect to the snow emergencies, that is fully contemplated in their parking management plan and embedded in the leases, and we also reviewed that with Captain Rigidz of the police department, and he's very comfortable with how that's structured, so just to allay that possible concern.
Mr. President, I move to close the public hearing.
Do you have the motion on favor and opposed the vote?
Mr. President, as special rule is move to receive item 8E and refer that to, get that communication to this hearing. So moved.
Do you have the motion on favor and opposed the vote?
Mr. President, I move to approve the application from One Main Street, Peabody LLC, 24 Jennifer Street.
Lane, PBDD, Mass. for a special permit to allow for the premises to be used as a multifamily mixed-use building containing a total of 20 residential units of One Main Street, PBDD, Mass. as filed in accordance with Section 4.2.1, 4.2.1, 5, 6.1, 9.2.1, and 15.7 of the PBDD zoning ordinance with the following conditions. Number one, there will be a maximum of 20 dwelling units on the second and third floors of the existing structure on the lot. There will be no dwelling units on the first level of the structure, which will be utilized for restaurant use. There should be no dwelling units on the basement level of the structure. The developments shall be in accordance with the O'Shea Apartments One Main Street PBDD drawing package dated October 5, 2017, and supplemented with the drawings provided this evening. Number two, as indicated in the application, as except as required by the provisions of inclusionary zoning requirements of the zoning ordinance of the City of PBDD developer, shall make reasonable commercial effort to maintain all remaining dwelling units as market-rate condominiums or apartments. Number three, residential parking shall be in accordance with the parking management plan included with the application as 12E continuation sheet. Number four, all exterior renovations to the structure and any sign for the commercial use in the structure shall comply with the zoning ordinance of the City of PBDD and shall be carried out in a manner consistent with the City of PBDD's downtown design standards for the Main Street sub-district. Number five, no apparatus, including but not limited to antennas or satellite receiving dishes, shall be placed on any roof or any facade of the structure or visible from adjacent streets and/or properties. Number six, as indicated in the application, no window air conditioners or similar apparatus shall be installed in the windows of the structure, and all HVAC equipment will be installed in a way that is not visible or screened from sight from adjacent streets and/or properties. Number seven, as indicated in the application, all trash and recycling materials shall be fully contained within the building, and professional pest control services will be utilized on an ongoing basis. Number eight, as indicated in the application, trash and recycling materials shall be removed by a private trash removal service at a frequency adequate to prevent the excessive accumulation of such materials from residential or commercial uses, and no municipal trash pickup shall be provided for the avoidance of doubt. Trash collections shall be in accordance with the ordinance of the City of PBDD. No trash or refuse or recycling collection shall occur between the hours of 7:00 PM or 7:00 AM any day of the week in accordance with the special permit application. The ordinance of the City of PBDD, construction hours of operation shall be from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Friday, and 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Saturday. Number 10, fire alarm and sprinkler systems shall meet all current requirements for new construction as per Massachusetts general law and Massachusetts building code. Number 11, projects shall be subject to construction review and subject to the recommendations of the construction review committee. Number 12, alleged violations of special permit conditions may result in show cause hearing at the city council, so moved.
Thank you, Counsel McGinn. You've heard the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote?
Counselors Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Matusulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinewitz.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Thank you. Brief two-minute recess. Brief two-minute recess. All the councils can take their seats, please. I need Jimmy. Oh, Jimmy.
Larry, you up here? I haven't been down yet. I love it.
Like to call the meeting back to order. Item 4D under hearings, Thomas J. Cassidy, Sr., 80 to 84 Wallace Street. Yes, Counsel Matus.
That will be continued till the 14th of December. They, the party has to go before the ZBA, before they can come here.
Thank you, Counsel Matus. You've heard the continuation to December 14th. Reports of committees. First up. Counsel Garabedian.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Municipal Safety Committee met tonight to discuss the Birch housing, the housing development that's gonna be going up, and the truck, if we can get a truck route going. Counselor Sinewitz had brought this to everybody's attention, and again, nothing's gonna be started till probably well over a year still, but, sooner? Oh, okay. I'll let you go in a minute. So Counselor Sinewitz made a motion to request that the PBDD Police Department conduct the feasibility study of Birch Street for possible two-way traffic from Russell Street to the proposed Birch Hill subdivision entrance of Birch Street. So that's the only motion that came out of it, and Counsel Sinewitz, did you wanna touch upon it for a second?
Yes, thank you. Through you to Counsel Garabedian. Thank you, Mike. Yeah, I mean, after meeting with the developer, the minute he gets his approval, he's gonna clear cut the 14 acres right down. And whether he starts removing soil right away will depend on the weather. And so this is gonna be a pressing issue. We wanna get it settled relatively, and we'll be working with the new counselor to take care of that shortly. So, thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Gravel.
I'm sorry, thank you. We have to vote on the motion. There was a motion there?
On the motion?
On the motion, we'll vote. Roll call vote?
Counselors Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Matusulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinewitz.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Counsel Gravel.
Thank you, Counsel President. This evening, there was a meeting of the Finance Committee, representing the committee, where myself, Counsel Gould, Counselor McGinn, Counsel Turco, and we also had Counsel Terrest in covering for Counsel Manning Martin, also in attendance with Counsel Matusulis, Counsel Sinewitz, Counsel Sasslaw, and Counsel Garabedian. First item on the agenda was a settlement of a legal claim against the City of PBDD from, basically, this was a discussion on moving funds from the reserve to the legal budget to settle a legal claim. A motion was made to move the budgeted reserve amount of $125,000, which was from account 1132057410 to our FY '18 legal budget account number 1151053114, in the same amount of $125,000. So moved.
Heard the motion. Roll call vote?
Counselors Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Matusulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinewitz.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Counsel Gravel.
Thank you, Counsel President. This evening, there was a meeting of the Finance Committee, representing the committee, where myself, Counsel Gould, Counselor McGinn, Counsel Turco, and we also had Counsel Terrest in covering for Counsel Manning Martin, also in attendance with Counsel Matusulis, Counsel Sinewitz, Counsel Sasslaw, and Counsel Garabedian. First item on the agenda was a settlement of a legal claim against the City of PBDD from, basically, this was a discussion on moving funds from the reserve to the legal budget to settle a legal claim. A motion was made to move the budgeted reserve amount of $125,000, which was from account 1132057410 to our FY '18 legal budget account number 11151053114, in the same amount of $125,000. So moved.
Heard the motion. Roll call vote?
Counselors Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Matusulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinewitz.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Counsel Gravel.
Thank you, Counsel President. This evening, there was a meeting of the Finance Committee, representing the committee, where myself, Counsel Gould, Counselor McGinn, Counsel Turco, and we also had Counsel Terrest in covering for Counsel Manning Martin, also in attendance with Counsel Matusulis, Counsel Sinewitz, Counsel Sasslaw, and Counsel Garabedian. First item on the agenda was a settlement of a legal claim against the City of PBDD from, basically, this was a discussion on moving funds from the reserve to the legal budget to settle a legal claim. A motion was made to move the budgeted reserve amount of $125,000, which was from account 1132057410 to our FY '18 legal budget account number 11151053114, in the same amount of $125,000. So moved.
Heard the motion. Roll call vote?
Counselors Garabedian.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Matusulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinewitz.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Second item on the agenda was a review of the golf course financing options, which was a proposal that had been brought to the table by Counsel Sinewitz in terms of refinancing the balance of the outstanding bond to improve the cash flow of the golf course. We were given some information by the city's finance director, Mr. Gingrich, and we were also told that there was other information that might be forthcoming. He will appear again at a Finance Committee meeting on the 14th of December at the latest, and he'll be presenting us with some additional options, whether we go three-year, five-year, 10-year, or internally fund from the reserve. So it's a report of progress. And the last issue was just a report of progress on revenues and expenses for the city, though it was Mr. Gingrich's opinion that, at this time, we're pretty much on course with our budget, and that there were no extraordinary issues to be reported. That was the end of the meeting. Thank you, Counsel President.
Thank you, Counsel Gravel. And just before we go to motions, orders, and resolutions, I would be remiss, I apologize, but Counsel Garabedian, I just wanna say, now, this is probably your last chair of the Municipal Safety Committee meeting, and I know it's been near and dear to your heart, and I believe, I don't know how many years you've been the chair on it, but when I got elected president, you reached out and you told me it was near and dear, and I appreciate all the work you've done. You've, you know, kept the city safe, and thank you for all your years of service, and I just wanna recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
(applause) Motions, orders, and resolutions. Counsel Garabedian.
Well, after that, I wish I had a motion, but I don't have any, so no motions.
Thank you, Counsel Garabedian. Counsel Gravel.
Thank you. I have, you know, I've been waiting patiently. I was kinda hoping by the concert that it would all be done, but I don't think we're gonna make that deadline. So again, I would ask for, from the building, the facilities director, as well as from the purchasing, the director of purchasing here in the city, to, for an update on the AV system and the completion, you know, I know there's a shortage of batteries out there, but, you know, sometimes a squeaky wheel will get the battery grease. I'm kinda hoping.
Batteries are in, Counsel Gravel, I've just been told. Batteries are in.
The batteries are in, but not charging stations.
All right, well, if you need any, if you need any help installing them, I think I can plug them in. But I really would hope that they could give us an update on not only the AV system, but on the hall improvements that were promised to us, which I thought were gonna be started during the summertime when it was nice and warm in here. Hopefully, that gets done soon, too, so that this will be the place that everybody wants it to be, which is beautifully situated next door to the new building that's gonna be there. So again, if I could just get a report, so moved.
Heard the motion on favor and oppose the vote?
And I would like to just make one comment. I had the privilege of attending last night the North Shore Chambers Distinguished Leader Award, and I truly felt that it was quite an honor to have both a friend and fellow counselor who was distinguished, Counsel Gould was distinguished by the group as being a leader, and I think he, you know, he humbly accepted it, but he certainly deserves a lot of credit for all that he's done for the community, not only in his public services as a counselor, but also in his private services associated with all the nonprofits, the Challenger League, et cetera. I thought he did a great job, and I just wanna commend him for such a wonderful job last night.[1582.83][1582.83](applause) And then, under suspension of the rules, I'll make a motion to move item 7A to the Finance Committee. So moved.
Thank you, Counsel Gravel. Counsel Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a motion from actually six months ago that I had requested we send to Industrial Community Development, and it's in regards to covered recycle bins, larger recycle bins. I don't believe we've ever heard that. I don't, I'm not really sure why that never came up in committee, but it has become an issue again on Lintfield Street. The recycle bins are too small, they're not covered. I would like to discuss the issue. So move to send that issue to Industrial Community Development.
So moved.
Mr. President, motion to replace the dead Eden sign at Elmwood Circle with a "not a thruway" sign. The dead Eden sign is pretty antiquated. If you could send that to Public Services.
Heard the motion on favor and oppose the vote?
No further motions, Mr. President.
Counsel Gould.
No motions, Mr. President.
Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Counsel Gravel, for your kind words.
Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8B and set up a public hearing, so moved.
Heard the motion on favor and oppose the vote?
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Counsel Walsh.
No motions, Mr. President.
Counsel Matus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to go to item 9A, motion to receive and set up a public hearing.
Heard the motion.
Okay, we, all of these is on your desk, there was a correction to 9A that is on your desk, and that's the one that we received.
I've seen that, Mr. Chairman. Motion to receive and set up a public hearing.
Thank you, Counsel Matus. You've heard the motion on favor and oppose the vote?
Right, no further motions.
Counsel Terrest.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to have a pedestrian flash, flashing light at the Baldwin Lowell Street with a crosswalk going across the street so people can use it to get to the bike path. And what I'm talking about, a flashing pedestrian light, it's a, it's a pole with a light that you push the button, it flashes, it alerts the cars are coming either way that somebody's trying to cross the street. It's not a red light, green light, it's just a standalone pole that flashes when families are trying to get to the bike path from the neighborhoods of Apple Hill and up in Brooksbury Farm, with a crosswalk. So moved.
Counsel Sinewitz.
Yeah, I think the PBDD police have to be involved through you to Counsel Charis, because when we did it at, well, that was actually a full light at St. Adelaide's, we did, there was traffic counts, traffic studies, so, you know, we, I think the motion should be to, you have to, you have to include, I think, it's gonna come back to you in terms of how it proceeds, so I don't know what the correct motion would be. I don't know, Mr. President.
I just, pouring information, Counsel Terrest, I just had to try and put a, I thought it was easy to put a crosswalk in, but it's not that easy. You might wanna go through Captain Richards.
So moved, yes. And I just, just so the public knows, this isn't a light that indicates that cars must stop, it's just a flashing light that shows that somebody is trying to cross. But, yeah, I'm more than happy to go through the right avenues.
wanna let the public know that we're aware of, and we're looking into it. Can I have a motion, Counsel Turco, 8C, did we receive that?
Move to receive and refer to the January, the December 14th meeting for Jubilee Drive.
Motion on favor and opposed to vote? Motion to adjourn?[1793.12]